Today is November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. Roll call this Chickasaw County Board Supervisors Meeting to Convene. Roll call, all members are present along with board director Tishu or Shakti. Is there a motion to approve today's agenda for the seventeenth? So. Motion by Scott, second by Travis, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion is carried. Approve the minutes from last Monday, the eleventh. Sorry, the tenth. November tenth.
Make a motion. Second.
There was a motion by Travis, second by Steve, to approve the minutes from last Monday, the tenth of November, in a discussion. If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oop, stay. Motion is carried for reserve. With Scott and Steve. Moving on to the minutes from last Wednesday, the canvas on November twelfth. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So. Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Isaac, to approve the November twelfth meeting minutes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion is carried. Um, let's go fix the minutes down on review and approve correction to the minutes of the Board of Supervising meeting on November third. It's on resolution number eleven, three, twenty-five dash forty-nine to a block that supervisor Carter was absent.
I kinda double did it there. I put him as saying yea and I had him as opposite. We just need a motion to correct it.
Is there a motion to correct the minutes from the third? Motion by Steve, second by Scott, to fix the minutes on November third. Any discussion? Uh, roll call Steve.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Isaac.
Go ahead and you give him stand because other than here.
I'll do that. Jake, aye, motion passed for reserve. Any public comment today?
No, but I can just chat one point because I want to ask. Any public comment? Okay. Do we have any space, Heston, yet?
Uh, a couple more things we can do before the nine ten. So discuss open board of commissions and direct the auditor to advertise. Sheila, you got additional?
I do. So. We realized that we were missing the benefited fire district on our, um, quote, our, our ad. So I just want permission to repost and have that added to it for our commissions and boards.
The applications are due?
The second, or the, they're due the fifth.
The fifth of the seventh. So all we're doing is just re-advertise and adding that down.
I'm just adding, yeah. I've already put it out once, it's on the door, and I just missed the benefited fire district.
You just wanna add it to the website and the posting, or do you wanna please submit to the local papers?
That's what I would guess, why don't you just send it over?
Followed up to the Fire District?
Only for expert.
For expert?
Okay.
So you gotta live in the Fire District.
I don't know if the paper will do anything yet.
The website, the door?
Is that a motion?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
So we're gonna advertise for the open position, sorry, it's not open, it's a term expiring for the Fire District for our boards and commissions. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Oh, we can do claims, I guess. Um, prior bill claims at the amount of twelve thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-four cents. Is there a motion to approve? Second. Motion by Steve, second by Scott, to approve claims that were noted as prior bills in the amount of twelve thousand, six, thirteen, and seventy-four cents. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carried. Claims for payroll dated last Friday, the fourteenth. Guys had a chance to look at those. If so, is there a motion to approve?
So.
Motion by Scott, second by Travis, to approve the payroll claims dated last Friday, the fourteenth of November. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carried. The bigger claims is the normal ones, a hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Is there a motion to approve?
So. Second.
What do we, Travis and, oh, Steve? Motion by Travis, second by Steve, to approve the claim to the amount of a hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-six cents. Any issues, discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion carried. I'm just gonna go to your side.
We're good.
We got nine, ten. Um, meet with Chickasaw County librarians, others, Crystal Griffin and others. Good morning.
Good morning.
Discuss library updates. And if you're into the fiscal year update budget request for fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, all right?
Hi, everyone. I'm Crystal Griffin, the Alta Vista Public Library Director. The Chickasaw Directors and Library Boards met in October. We agreed to ask for a three percent rate. With inflation, the cost of our services are going up. We want to make sure we are able to provide the best services we can to our patrons. Over Labor Day weekend, all the Chickasaw Directors partnered together and had a booth at the Big Four Fair. We had hundreds of people come through our booth. The parents were excited and appreciative that we did this. We plan to do this again next year and have been asked to do something similar for the Chickasaw County Four-H Fair next summer. We appreciate your continued support to be able to provide our patrons the best service we can. If you have any questions, we're willing to answer. And then my mayor would also like to talk.
Does he have any questions?
I just wanna reiterate what Crystal said. I, I know an Alta Vista library is, is a hub of where folks get together and do, I was just there last Wednesday. They had bingo and there was a lot of folks there. Crystal does things for kids. We don't have anything else for kids. We don't have anything to bring people together in Alta Vista because we don't have a whole lot. But the library with Crystal's leadership has really done a good thing. I, I know you guys have cut their budget the last couple of years, so, um, but they, then with what she had, she's done a really good job. And I think it's a little bit more, we could do a lot more with what they've got because they, she's done that program. She's brought in, um, Noreen Gosh and there's what, two hundred plus people there? So we've had, we've had really good, um, um, people that have really participated in what Crystal has done in Alta Vista. I can't speak for the other towns, but I would like to see our library thrive and go on. So if you guys would consider the three percent, that'd be great. Thank you.
And we do know how you guys like to see the numbers from the previous year. So we have put together all of our numbers for statistics for the last fiscal year of all of our rural county patrons that have visited the library, have saved money, patron accounts, how many items were checked out, so.
Thank you. Um, just the mayor, I guess, is here. Are you guys gonna honor the three percent at City Council, too?
The City Council has supported the, we got, I'm gonna push for it. I can't guarantee anything.
I got you, man.
But we did just, I don't know if you guys knew, but we did, I forgot to mention that. We just did redo our library and, uh, we had donations and we had grants and our library, it looks much better than it did before. And that was totally supported by the community. So we have community support. I just think it would be, and people love Crystal, too, so.
It looks good.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, does, it does. Thank Mr. Stein, I think you did a nice job with it, so. So, yeah, I'm gonna push for that. I think we should match whatever you match.
Good to hear.
That's the same with Nashua. Nashua's gonna ask for three percent from our city as well.
All around, yes. In four.
Is your hours of service still the same for most of them?
Yes.
Nothing has increased?
Um, with the exception of, I know that they have a new director, so they have changed their hours a little bit, but it's still the same amount of hours a week. So, yes, this is our new director for Iowa, Jason.
Yep.
And Alta Vista's opened ours, two hours were on Thursdays, um, most of the year, except for a couple months in the winter. And people seem to like that, having it open a little bit longer, two days a week instead of just one.
We were discussing amongst ourselves in the hall that, you know, Iowa dissolved that Iowa, uh, library levy and, uh, we lost a lot of money in Heatherheim. And we have seen no decrease in funding from our cities. So they.
Our cities are very supportive.
They ate that and kept our funding it. And for New Hampton, it was a big number. I'm very appreciative and, uh, yeah, our cities are stepping up in big ways.
Any other questions, comments? All right, you have a second budget request for the next fiscal year, so we will keep it under advisement. You, we'll bring it back if something changes, um, otherwise we'll enter this as the request. Total is. One twenty-eight, sixty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents, which nulls a three percent for last fiscal year. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Please reach out if you have any questions.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Steve, would you like to see if Ray is ready so we can talk about the, uh?
Consensus last week?
I expect that it might run out of the box or something.
Yeah, go ahead.
That might change. And wife and kids, that may change.
Do you want to hear that?
Yeah. He said, go on that, we can't look at that face.
We are missing EMS director, but just as a general comment, um, discuss the amount to go to the partial self-funding balance at IGHCP and how we'll get paid with some further discussion of the consensus last week of sixty thousand. Sheila and myself are trying to figure out how we, or should we break that up to tax authorities or secondary road fund? So on the spreadsheet and up on the screen, uh, thanks to Ray, it was kind of his idea after the meeting.
Yep.
That.
The idea was for my fund, okay? I was, I was proposing on my fund, in my budget.
But after.
More than clear.
Yep, after you proposed that, I thought some more as your guys' chair, wondering if we should take the eighty-five county employees. You can see the breakdown, forty-nine are under general supplemental. Yeah, Jeff does not, yep. So twenty-nine is covered under secondary road fund. Three is covered under EMA, sorry, sorry, EMS. And then four is covered under the assessor's office. So simple math, sixty thousand divided by eighty-five gives you a seven oh five eighty-eight increase to the PSF one-time fund into PSF. That's the breakdown. This is just for discussion for budget work session on budget amendment number two. Are you guys okay for the argument? Enter these in. I know I talked to Roman.
My one question would be, is this a one-time payments to, uh, cause with my department, we have so many labor categories that I appropriate based on that labor amount. So am I just check one time and then it's, you know, which fund or, you know, which line item number am I?
I would say it's a one-time.
Yeah, it'd probably be like a healthcare adjustment, you know, that we put yours under and ours, too.
So you make like a new line item for us, then?
Yeah, basically.
Okay.
And this may not be a one-time deal. It depends.
Well, we're hoping to look at it very hard in February, March, if we have to fund the PSF on the renewal, a little bit stronger than the seventeen percent. Board members, are there any questions? I just, it's a more fair way to catch the eighty-five people that take it.
It's quite likely we'll have to increase.
Oh.
Yeah, this is looking for, for a way to do it.
I guess we'll ask for the consensus because we have to have the public hearing. Also, um, is this what you guys wanna see then for preparing a budget amendment number two? For these, to equal this amount of sixty thousand to IGHCP?
Yeah, I think this looks fair. I just, yeah.
All right. Is there any? Nope. Well, in favor of the way this is made up to fund IGHCP at one time, this fiscal year adjustment to the trust fund. Is it okay, Roman? Do you need a budget amendment?
I just want what makes Ray happy.
Well, let's ask the case.
And I'll look more into it, Roman, before we hit your accounts and see what, you know, maybe the, since we do have, you know, section of per person, maybe she may want us to do it. I don't know. But I would think it'd just be an adjustment, but I'll check with her before we do anything with your accounts.
Otherwise, you might have like thirty items for a budget amendment from me with health insurance for four sixty-seven.
Oh, I see, okay.
But you still have a separate department day. If you don't spend it, it goes back.
I'm not too worried that twenty, I don't think twenty thousand is gonna really, hopefully not trigger the need for a budget amendment from secondary road fund. It might not be the worst idea just to include it with anybody else's. Not assuming other.
We have to do one for the tip.
Yeah, we have to do it for the tip.
Yep.
All right, consensus is taken on that issue. We'll just start from the top for that one, sorry, guys. Land use administrator Ray, well, good morning, Ray.
Morning.
Approved resolutions today, eleven, seventeen, twenty-five, fifty-two, a minor subdivision.
What we have here, it's, uh, seven lots that they're prepared. And it's kinda in that gray area between a minor subdivision, major subdivision. Because it's more than three lots, it qualifies for a major subdivision. But at the same time, a major subdivision also incorporates the fact that there's a need for public infrastructure, uh, public improvements, uh, private or public roads. And this, uh, uh, plat does not call, does not call for any of those. So I'm asking in this resolution that you waive this, uh, plat of survey, uh, subdivision as a major and approve it as a minor subdivision. Two lots to the back. The next page actually has it upside down, previous page.
This one?
Previous. Keep going. It actually has it upside down. But there's two back lots that are gonna be accessed by easements, uh, interest, interest easements and not an actual, uh, road or plat of the private road. And so that's why I'm asking, uh, that, uh, you would waive the requirement to just be filed under a major subdivision and be approved as a minor subdivision. I've discussed it with Dave and, uh.
It, our ordinance allows that.
Allows that?
Our ordinance allows that to happen.
Yes.
This is, looks on County Road B fifty-six and three hundred street. It has the closest intersections.
Yep.
Is there a motion then to waive it as a ma, a major?
Three hundred tenth and Union Avenue.
Three tenth.
Except for very southern end of the county.
So then Dave, the motion would be to waive major to minor and then pass the resolution?
Oh, yeah, that's all included, get all the resolutions.
Okay.
Make motion to approve resolution one, seventeen, twenty-five, fifty-two, minus seven.
Sorry. Uh, motion by Steve, second by Scott, to approve resolution eleven, seventeen, twenty-five, fifty-two, a minor subdivision. Approve the subdivision plot of the, what's that name, Ray? Zabroy? Zabroy, addition, addition from S southeast one quarter of the section. We do a roll call vote. Uh, Steve.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Travis.
Aye.
Isaac.
Aye.
Jake, I, motion is carried, fires. Thanks, Ray. Moving on to your presentation and approval of the family farm tax credit applications.
Every year, you folks have to approve, uh, family farm credit app, applications with original copy. You should have, I submitted to everybody, yeah, always submit to the auditor, and I'm submitting to you folks.
Yeah, it's important.
We have sixty-four new applications that I'm recommending approval. Nine new applications that I'm requiring or recommending denial. And, and on that list, there's a reason for that denial. Then three existing farm applications that no one qualified, but you don't need to take action on those. Suppose that, uh, recommending denial is, uh, one is that, uh, relationship with the person, um, is on, most of them, uh, require the ant seed, there are certain requirements as far as family members, just farming ground. And, uh, of those, nine, eight, the person is farming, does not qualify as that family participant. And then the ninth is the fact that, uh, it's a hill on this land. Why they fall, why they applied on that, I don't know. But.
Dave, just to clarify, can I vote on my own or as a group, I can approve this? Or should I have state? It's a credit.
It's probably safer for us to aim, but.
Just, just ask that question. Thank you. Is there a motion then to approve this sixty-four new family farm and the de- denial of the nine?
Only motion. Sorry.
Motion by Travis, second by Steve, to approve the sixty-four new family farm tax credit applications for approval and the nine for the denial. Any discussion? The nine, being informed that there was a denial.
Yes, I will have a letter put together that they will, that you send out.
Any other questions, concerns?
And their appeals to district court. International. Great. Yeah.
So Ray had all the good reasons why he denied it.
I hope so. Yeah. I, I guess, yeah, we work together quite well, so.
If there's nothing else, we will do a roll call. Travis.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
Isaac.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Uh, Jake, go up, Steve. Motion is carried. Thanks, Ray.
All right, thank you.
Moving on. Custodian Day, morning, Dave.
Good morning.
Um, just a couple of updates. I guess a concern that I had and, and I visited with Scott and the county attorney. Can you explain the blue truck, uh, what you noticed last week and, and how you repaired it?
Oh, uh, yeah, the old blue maintenance pickup that we have, uh, last week wouldn't start. Starter was out of it, battery was getting old and weak. Uh, I contacted Secondary Road Shop, they said that they would do some repairs on it for me, which they did. And, um, they also said that the frame is, in a couple of areas, is starting to look pretty bad, so, um, I think the future of the truck is not, not looking real likely here at this point, so.
So not over a long time.
It's got two hundred and fifty thousand on it, I think, or pretty close, so.
So nothing that you or the mechanic saw that it should be parked or no, no cracking?
No, no, they, they said it's, it's good for, you know, I'm, I'm sure through the winter and whatever, but I would say anything past the next year is probably looking pretty iffy on it. So like I told Jake before, I don't, I don't need some fancy new pickup or whatever. I mean, something used is just fine because we're just ramrodding around hauling stuff with it anyway, so it's not, we don't have to have a brand new four-wheel drive truck or something like that.
So I've done some research for you guys. We do have a white pickup, which we call a three-quarter ton snow blade, parked at the Heritage under Custodian. Not saying it's a negative, but it's awful hot off the ground.
It is, yeah, that, and as far as being able to load heavy objects and stuff, it's quite a ways up on that truck. And also, you, when we bought that truck, the main function of that was plowing snow and basically hauling the election equipment and stuff like that, so.
For that blade, I believe we had to have a three-quarter ton.
We did, yes.
So I guess in the future budget amendments or budget talks, um, I think Dave's requested, if I can ask, a new truck or a new, uh, custodian vehicle. Also researched, I know in the past, the Public Health, Environmental Health Agency, maybe it's time to have them look at the demo vehicle and then we, the General Service can buy their truck from them, or we need to do some talking with engineer's office and do this.
Talk to Sam, maybe one of our used pickups.
Rotate.
Shuffle in new or. I'll trade you my number one Colorado for your new three-quarter ton.
No, what year is that Colorado? So, yeah, we'll, we'll do some talking, yeah. I know Chad from the County Council, he should be looking at getting it on one of his pickups, too. Would that work for maintenance, too? Do you ever drive the maintenance truck outside of the county?
Just on very rare occasions, once in a while to pick up a very urgent needed part or haul pop cams to Crestco because that's the only place that we can get rid of those anymore. Other than that, you know, not, you know, we might venture out to a tower site here or there every now and then, but, um, you know, as far as long road trips, no.
Going back to the blue pickup, uh, we all know the condition it's in. Um, is there any liability driving it yet or we want you to be safe, too?
It was, well, the guys at the Secondary Road Shop indicated that the frame is getting bad, but it doesn't. bad, but it doesn't look like it's gonna break here real soon, no, no, it's, it's got some time on it, but if you're looking past a year or so, I probably wouldn't venture out too much further than that, so.
Any other comments from the board or?
Yeah, I think it's, you know, we need, I don't know if we need to do a budget amendment, but definitely look at it during budget to get something before we do have a problem. As it sits right now, I, I'm confident that I can make it through the winter with it right now. You know, tires are half tread, which is fine. Starter's good, battery's good now, so I think, you know, in cold weather, you're not gonna have starting issues and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, I'd like to not, not have a budget amendment, but if we could find another trucks in one of the county, it, that, cause you don't put a lot of miles on it.
No. It's basically running back and forth from building to building, heritage, you know, several times a week, things like that, so.
Alright, moving on to the second item, um that Dave's been working on, some new carpet in Sheriff's Office?
Yes, we have the carpet squares over in the Sheriff's Office, just like we have in the bordering here. Uh there were, we have the, the chair roller mats down, you know, so the carpet's not getting chewed, that kind of chairs there. But on the outer edges, the carpet has gotten pretty dirty, pretty worn, things like that, so I had dungenes come over and uh tear up bad tiles, which ended up being about, I think around twenty-five or thirty tiles, and replaced those, so we have the dispatch room looking really good right now. Um I was thinking of those areas that are really well traveled in there, to find another chair mat or two and cutting it in sections so that you're not walking on carpet anywhere in there, because that just seems to be the most heavily traveled area in the whole building there, so.
Would it be wise to maybe put some of that temporary sticky back plastic if there's dirty boots or whatever it is?
Well, as long as we don't have snow and things like that coming in right now, I think I've, you know, within a week or two here, I can have those mats cut up and put down.
Um and then the third thing is the power issue at the courthouse, just a quick update, um David Gorman and Scott and myself visit with the contractor Thursday? Friday? So just a little bit of a, we'll do some pictures up here for you all. So on Tuesday, Veterans Day, the courthouse was closed, Stan Electric did replace that panel on the second floor in the closet. It's a brand new square D three-phase breaker with a lot of twenty amp breakers in it and it feeds, a lot of stuff on the second floor, um Otter's Office, obviously. So the panel there is up on the screen, they use the old cover because they were worried about the new panel, a little bit smaller cover, so they just cut the cover, the door off and use the existing cover to cover up the open areas. So then on Friday, they did the brown outside, I don't have a picture, but you guys can see the black there. So this wire here on the right is the main wire coming in from outside, and then you can see all the green, black, copper on this isolated copper bar. Once they got it all installed and these other ground wires to the locations uh to keep them in isolated ground, they took a resistance meter and it's a point seven, which is great, I read his texts that Chuck sent me and Scott. Uh Chuck cannot be here today. It, uh anything under twenty-five uh resistance is good ground, we have a point seven, there's an excellent ground now in the building. He said he made a lot, we, the county made a couple of great moves this week. In the looks on Tuesday, um they found some breakdown of conduit when they pulled out the copper wires from the second floor down to the basement, um which, what did he classify as sand and?
Yeah, it was just like, you know, a little bit corrosion, had a sandy white.
So they did, when he, when he thought that nineteen sixty-six was the bus bar on this panel, um conduit was probably put in nineteen twenty, whenever the courthouse was built. He's recommending, I did this with county attorney, uh recommending to potentially rewire the whole courthouse. I took a drawing, if I can find it, just a very rough how the electrical works in this courthouse. So we have three phase coming in from the pole into the main panel that, which was done last, last year sometime, or a year and a half ago.
Correct.
From that panel, it goes to a sub-panel, um which has twelve main breakers in it that feed those sub panels on each floor. So the only one that is done now is the second floor panel has a brand new copper, brand new panel and a ground wire within it. We have four other panels that have the ground wire and they rely on the conduit as the source. There's one in the basement, on the bottom of steps, there's one in the machine room, one in the third floor spiral case, and there's one. Remember someone?
That's all, yeah, cause the one was replaced on the second floor. So we basically just have third floor, first floor and machine room.
This will be well over ten thousand dollars, cause you'd be needing to buy three more panels, a lot more copper wire, a lot more labor. Chuck knows he cannot fall under maintenance anymore. Right Dave? It's gonna come to a, a bid process. Chuck is willing to design it, uh we pay him for that service, um we just need to have some direction. About an estimator, but you guys can see the second floor panel costs that, I think it was like thirty-five hundred and then the ground stuff costs fifty-two hundred roughly. So the ground stuff is done, second panel's done. Do you guys wanna move forward on any other panel in the courthouse? Uh they did find out when they took covers off of the machine room panels, it goes from the basement up to the attic, over behind, I think the judge's chamber, down to the engineer's bathroom, into the machine room.
Yep.
They found two boxes in between that route as pull boxes and they spliced those copper wires in a couple of those boxes. Every time you splice the main feed, you lose resistance, you lose voltage, um not saying nothing, I mean Chuck even said it, we're not blaming anybody here, but it would be a continuous copper from basement to panel and no more splicing in, in pull boxes or junction boxes. And then they actually spliced the neutral, the white wire, in a couple of those boxes to feed the two panels in the machine room. We all know that method, you know, you're relying on that neutral as your ungrounded neutral back to the main, so. I guess what I'm asking for is, do we want a contractor to draw this out and then go out for bids in the next three to, three to eight weeks?
Well, I guess we have to just, I mean, we've provided the ground to our boxes where we have not, we really haven't provided the ground to any of the outlets, so we really haven't accomplished anything yet.
Yes, so there's a nice green on second floor, but what I gotta say is if the conduits that go to the individual outlets are not holding together, you don't have that ground that, any times it shakes, moves, uh whatever, you lose, potentially losing that ground path.
And we know in the machine room, the one box has got the, it, it's set up, but it's not being utilized.
Correct.
Well, I, I think we have to, I mean, it just, we spent this money to get this far and then we're, we're still not accomplishing what we need.
Well, I think that now that we're aware of the deficiencies, you know, I think if we didn't act, our church company probably would not, I think there's a plan, you know, that there.
So I guess, yeah, and Travis, you got anything to add or?
No, I mean, I, I agree, I think we need to, we probably need to do something.
The tronics are very, um, they don't like to be unbalanced, they, they don't like the spikes, they, we have a very good ground out into the building and a very good ground on the second floor, it's the same resistance, right? It's connected, um, I, I just think the age of the building and the electronics we have, we need to have that very good source at that outlet.
Capital projects, most of us are.
We could, uh but I think even fifty-one has plenty of money in it to cover this cost. We were pushing it in November. I don't think you would need a budget, but we could use capital project funds, but who knows, you know? Second floor panel costs, we all saw the bill, thirty-two, you add another three, so three, uh maybe under ten, twelve, uh ten to twenty thousand, I don't know. I guess the direction that we need to let. The last amendment. Just have Chuck design it, um I would prefer if we use the same square D panel as he used, then Dave has an easier access of changing breakers than having four different kinds of breakers.
Chuck indicated to me that these panels that we have right now are dated back to probably the late sixties and uh breakers for these aren't even available anymore. He said they have a few laying around possibly, but if we would have a big issue with a panel in here, we're just, we're done, because there's actually no parts to repair on it, so.
We come to consider this a new, a new project, do we?
Yeah, it is, I mean, I think, again, I mean, by state law, there's no requirement for you to get a bid at all, so I mean, if you guys just say today, hey, we're just gonna hire Chuck to do it, he tells us what the amount is and we're gonna hire you to do it, you're not, you're not even following the law, it's your own internal policy is what the issue is, so your own internal policy, what you expect all the rest of us to follow is, hey, if it's more than ten thousand dollars, you want a bid, so it seems a little bit awkward for you to say, okay, we're not gonna get a bid on something that might be more than ten thousand dollars. Now that's up to you, whether you wanna do that or not, um, you know, and the bottom line is, you know, Jake and I talked about this last week, is, you know, Chuck's familiar with the system, I understand that, um, and he's done all the work in here, so he is familiar with the system. Will you get another bidder, I have no idea, um, but given the fact you're gonna put it out for bids, you need to make sure we're getting apples to apples bid conversion, so I don't know who has the expertise and the knowledge to do that, whether Dave and Jake can sit down together and say, hey, we want three panels that look like X, Y, and Z with this manufacturer, this model, they can put that together, just so long as the bidders are bidding apples to apples, that's all I care about, if, if you're gonna put out for bids. I'm not saying you have to hire Chuck to do that, I don't know what it would even cost or entail, but if you're gonna put it out for bids, we wanna make sure the bids are coming back the same thing, not one's big, something else, and you have to decide which one you're gonna go with, that's my, that's my two cents.
And then once Chuck writes up a plan, wouldn't the only basic thing, I mean, I obviously if they follow his, his specs or whatever, the only other issue would be making sure that everybody had the same brand of panel, correct?
You put that in a spec sheet.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a square D three-phase panel.
Okay.
I mean, as of today, Chuck has done a lot of research of known locations and what's where, so I think under a couple of hours, he could easily do a spec sheet on it. I just don't want any other contract to come back, so he's expected, um, I have a little bit of knowledge myself and I think Dave does too of the building, so we could put something together with a little bit of knowledge from Chuck to get something out there next week for, uh Chuck is on vacation though, he's out of the state until I think next Friday, so, this Friday, so. He's a real boy, by phone, if we wanted to ask him a question, but. Am I hearing that you guys wanna go out with?
You know, a motion to hire Chuck to drop the specs. I'm very motion to hire Chuck Stan Electric to uh drop the spec sheet to loop up wiring for uh.
Motion by Scott, second by Steve to hire Chuck Stan Electric, or Stan Electric, um to get a spec sheet to redo the panels at the courthouse that he has not done yet. Is that the motion?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody who votes, motion is carried. Anything else, Dave?
I think that covered it.
So equipment ready to go?
Pretty close, just got one tractor to get ready yet. Uh we're done cleaning up leaves, yards look good, um yeah, I think we're, we're pretty close to being ready for winter.
Alright, anybody else say anything? For Dave? Dave, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to Engineer Roman Lett, can we run him? Couple things on the agenda, we could start at the top, approve the hiring of Austin Reich's equipment operator labor starting November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
So we had, gee, you need one of these? I'm here to see it. A lot of applicants, we had nine interviews, we did uh send it out for people that didn't have a Class A C D L. Austin interviewed real well, as did several others, um Tyler and myself made the decision to offer to him, he accepted, um with a start date of next Monday, and that followed the union contract for wages.
How'd you place it, Joe?
Yes.
Is there any motion to approve? Who said that? Sorry, that's cool, middle picture. Motion by Travis, second by Steve to approve hiring of Austin Reich's equipment operator labor starting November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five per union contract. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, just say aye. Aye, anybody who votes, motion is carried. Review with possible action, resolution eleven seventeen twenty-five fifty, a resolution for establishing speed limits.
So this came from quite a few requests or concerns of no speed limit signs on Kenwood Avenue, um specifically by the, by Crowell's main office there that we just paid, um then I got looking a little bit more, well, there's no speed limits anywhere on Kenwood, which is legal, but then you gotta resort to Iowa code to know that it's fifty-five, um depending on the district that you're in, um. So got a traffic recorder counter device from LTAP, they're free to rent out, set it up in three locations, multiple days, um go through the data, went through crash data history, you guys got the report, all the data, all my recommendations, all that stuff. Basically from uh two tenth street to highway eighteen, I'm suggesting a fifty-five mile an hour speed zone, pretty standard, um I think that it's, feels right when you're on the road, uh look at the data, you'll see some pretty comical speeds in all of these too, I don't know if you noticed that, but um so we're recommending fifty-five miles an hour for that stretch. Um segment two, which is basically from highway eighteen north to what I refer to as Bozville, which is more of a suburban district in, in essence, I guess, to me, um that would be fifty-five as well. Um I am suggesting that when you get into Bozville, coming from the south and north, we have a forty-five mile an hour speed limit. Density, population density and the proximity to that highway there, um I have had people call in requesting it, they've never sent in a formal request, but I use this one to kind of validate that as well. So we'd have forty, you know, speed zone ahead, reduce speed limit from the south, post forty-five, um right on the south end there before the first house. Um on the north side, you would have a end speed zone as you continue north passenger coming in from the north, you'd probably have a speed zone ahead and a forty-five on the north side of the bridge, and then fifty-five as you're heading south, so.
Do you have to put them on every intersection or just?
No.
Start to finish?
Yep. It's recommended, and it's not recorded, it's recommended that if you have a paved road, be a paved road, cause I know we've had, oh, north of town, north of the shop, people want them all over there, and that, cause that's a higher density as well for speed and reduction, but they're at the, they're at sixty-three and then also when you're heading out.
Any other questions on resolution fifty? Have any other paper on the county marked?
Uh with the, except for like a two twenty-fifth, when you're coming off of the highway sixty-three, that little, I didn't notice that the other day. Liza noticed that the other day.
That goes to Lynn?
Yeah. I'm not too worried about that one, but the short stretch. We do have one coming up that'll involve the city of Proton as well as Howard County, but that's adding a speed limit. Going into Proton when you're coming from the west, it goes fifty-five, forty-five, twenty-five, but heading out of town, it goes twenty-five to fifty-five. So that one's underway as well, but we'll get the city's approval first. Basically adding a forty-five section between the two.
I think you've done your investigation. I think it's required. I think it's cost. So you're looking at ten signs?
Yeah. So you're looking, I don't know. I mean, you want material equipment?
Later. Yes, about ten signs and?
Cause I've been around twenty-five hundred bucks.
Motion to approve, resolution eleven seventeen twenty-five fifteen, resolution for establishing speed limits.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Steve, second by Isaac, to approve resolution eleven seventeen twenty-five fifty. Establishing speed limits, let's say on Kenwood Avenue.
You've got the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. That's for you.
Any discussion? Not hearing any, so we'll do a work call. Steve?
Aye.
Isaac? Travis? Scott? Jake, I, motion carried, size zero. Discuss engineers' office building project.
So, the last few days, the last week, I spent significant amount of time reviewing plans, sending back my comments. They're supposed to be getting plans finalized today, tomorrow, and we're planning to send the notice to bidders out on Friday for the engineers' office building. I gave you guys a tentative schedule that I received this morning. So basically today is our approval to bid, which we've already done. That's more so on their end, the Tura's. Looking for our proceed, I guess. Notice to bidders, like I said, would be issued on Friday, the twenty-first. There will be a pre-bid meeting, which will just involve myself, and if any contractors have questions on sites, that'll be December first. The county would issue notice of public hearing to the New Hampton Tribune for publishing on December ninth, or I would assume December eleventh. Received opening of bids will be December eighteenth. That's in the engineers' office. Gives me a day to review, and then on Monday, December twenty-second, we'd have a public hearing or board or objection of contract. With contract docs, I have not gotten them yet. I expect to see them today or tomorrow. But they're talking about putting a, early start date of April sixth and a substantial completion date of December eighteenth. And then you guys got, a lot of the plans that you got have been doctored, so don't look. Or since you got them, they've been revised. I'm starting to get, I told them, like, let me know when you consider yourself done, so I'm not reviewing this to review it again. And then you guys also got their opinion of probable cost. In my opinion, that's a little high, as far as what I think the building's actually gonna be bid at, but we don't truly know until the bid happens. Sat down with Jake a little bit. Just he was around here talking about it after I received it. You know, ways to reduce costs. I feel like we condensed this building quite a bit to where now if we were to say, let's take out our record storage and somehow make it work somewhere else, you're gonna have costs for redesign. So I guess I'm suggesting we go forward with the bidding. Make the decision at that time, whether, you know, if it's over the six hundred, we're right in budget season, if we can come to an agreement on how it would be spent, or, you know, the additional cost would be paid for. My guess would be probably secondary roads budget, but I won't know till it's bid. And now we've already been paying towards his first bill out of.
Our general administration for that test, yeah. The twenty-six thousand, sixteen dollars and sixty cents.
So, yeah, this is the estimate. We don't know how, how.
They got overhead profit, miscellaneous and contingency in there, general conditions. I did email them on some of the site work stuff. The only thing there is that that site work stuff isn't like, hey, be here for five days and you're done. It's, hey, I need you here about every other week or every week to do one little thing, and then another thing, and then another thing. I did email them some of them that I feel that our crews could do, you know, like Class A rock driveway. Yeah, I think we could do that, but it's only a twelve hundred dollar item in their estimate. So, you know, we'll try to do as much as we can, but I don't think pulling my bridge crew from building a bridge down in the southwest portion of the county to come up and grade a driveway or a stoop for a walk-in is probably saving the county any money. Be different if we could just do it all and go, but.
Any questions?
I like the, I like the pictures of them. They're nice. It turned out really good.
No, they've been very easy to work with. We've had weekly, sometimes five or twice a week meetings. I think they've done a very good job.
It doesn't look that bad. Thanks, guys.
So on their sheet that you handed us this morning, today, one more approval to bid.
Yeah, they, I just got that this morning and it was about half hour before I walked in here, so I guess if you guys want to be able to consensus to commence with what we've already done. I mean, we've had public hearings on the U R P and the loan and everything, so, and then the R F P for architectural services, so I don't see why that approval isn't already had.
I just said they wanted an update, so they're not changing the documents all the time.
Yep.
Rowan has reviewed them all. I think, yeah, I guarantee it's too bid. You guys have any concerns or disagreement on what we've seen the last, what, two, three months, so? Not hearing any. I think we're good to go, Rowan.
We're good.
You're what?
Do we need that?
I don't know. What do you think, Dave? I guess, I mean?
Cause they, they wanna honor approval to bid.
Well, we do have, we have that.
Just understand that Dave, it says issue bidding documents early on. Honor approval to bid at county board meeting on November seventeenth, so.
I haven't had those ones.
They came out with it this morning.
That's why I haven't seen it.
I think they just want permission.
I don't think they, Rob is making the motion to put it out for bids. Hope you want some recommendation from the architect.
Is there a motion and stuff like that? Oh, my God. Is there a second? Sir. Motion by Steve, second by Scott. To go out for the approval to bid on the secondary roads office building. Any discussion? If not, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Department of Dave, Rowan.
So last week, we did a lot of displating on several stretches of roadway. We did get concrete removed on La Salle. It's where the old pipeline hub is, F S slash Gromark. Currently own that area now. Back in the day, that was paved like a sidewalk on a gravel road, so we got that removed because it was causing potable issues and honestly, it was probably a bit of a danger to the traveling public the way it was keeping up. So that's out of there. Snow fence posts are installed for the most part. We do have one location remaining. Lot of rushing, whether it be us, Kid Bowers, or Whom More's. Whom More is in the law that it played out, and I believe we're sending it to Frederick's Purge this week. Spot bleeding all week, spot rock and erosion control at various structures the past couple of weeks. We did have one closure on Kenwood South one fifty that was opened up the week prior to last week. And we're doing a lot of drift removal from the floods at various bridges, trying to get all this stuff wrapped up from that flood. Shop, we do have five trucks winter serviced and dressed. Six is underway currently. Guys been looking at options for used semi and dump trailer, new dump trailer, used semi. Trying to find something similar to what we had with the truck that we're now hauling the excavator with, so we can get, start to do some belly dumps. Hauling thirty-ton. See. Bridge oh four seven five, which is Brimway County Lion Bridge that was completed last year. Project closeout is finally completed and approved by the Iowa DOT and FHWA. That was a long road. Bridge twenty-four hundred, Call Blacktop, that was open to traffic on November tenth. Lot of meetings with the Tura, plan reviews. Surveying several projects. Liza and Ben have been out daily. I'd say we're surveying about ten, ten or so projects, trying to get our development out further than we have been. And while it's nice in November, it's good to get it, to get better service when the weeds are out of the trees, so. Mowing hard surface round four was completed the week prior to last. I mentioned the bridge on Kenwood. More of the same as our blades were out all week, spot rocking and drift removal. Oh two seventy, which was the bridge on three hundred piece of E fifty-six, that project closeout is pretty much completed. The DOT did give Liza a really good compliment, saying that's one of the best jobs on an audit that they've ever seen anybody do, so kudos to her on doing a great job there. City of New Hampton, their twenty-eighty agreement, I received it, I reviewed it, I commented on it, have not heard anything bad, so. Nor has Dave. Okay, so we're on the same page. Yeah. So we're trying to get into the brushing mode, get ready for winter. Projects are wrapped up.
We got a question for you, Rowan. This brushing, the intersections and stuff. What if the landowner has trees that protrude past?
Technically, we can cut. Imagine a plane above.
Okay.
The hard part gets to be butchering the tree.
Yep.
Possibly, or hiring a tree trimming service, you know, that's not cheap. That's where the conflicts usually.
We've had a deal at my office before in the past since I've been here, and sent letters to folks, so.
Well, I know of one, one place where I've been taking call phones.
If it's something, sometimes if it's, if it's a tree that's doing that and it's on the landowner's property, first thing is, can we cut just the limb? Or do they want the tree out completely?
Well, they just want people to see.
I know, but if the landowner is fine with the tree being out, then a lot of times, instead of us trying to get thirty feet up or whatever it may be, sometimes we might just take the tree down. But I, I'd say nine times out of ten, that isn't how somebody feels about their tree.
Oh, I can get a few next, what's gonna happen.
So, yeah. It probably, it all depends on the location. I don't really like to just go hack something up and make it look bad to people, so if we can't do it safely, then we gotta hire a tree trimming company, which we've done before. We've had thoughts of maybe getting a man basket, but I don't know if that is the liability that goes along with that profession and. Yeah. So, yeah, if you wanna give me the location, we can certainly.
Well, I saw it a little already, but I'll come over.
Just remind you again, those trees west of New Hampton, if you guys are gonna start doing ditches. I'm on the railroad.
I'm waiting to hear from Casey in the railroad.
Yeah, I've heard nothing.
Me and Casey talked, like I said, if we're gonna do that with our crews, it's gonna be on a frozen day, because that's a swamp in there.
It is by the overpass.
Yep.
Sounds good.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you. So, committee assignments. Travis, Scott.
CSS will be here again Wednesday. It sounds like it is the last meeting. They close up on the computers left and the last couple of claims.
I have a, Steve, we have a community action personnel committee meeting, November fourteenth. What's your handbook, policy revisions? Some job description updates. In the twenty-twenty-six wage discussion, they decided there's gonna be no cost of living this year, or it's coming here. So their health insurance stayed the same. They discussed options of one percent and the one and a half percent wage increase. And with the one percent, that's what we'll recommend at the next poll meeting. See with the budget restraints, they just felt that they couldn't go more than one percent.
I think it is.
On November fifth, I got a Floyd Mitchell Chisal landfill meeting. We discussed October financials, approved them. We had a discussion on the meeting fees and travel payments for the board. We had just recently met to a I P R S audit. And I P R S has recommended that all the board members become employees of the landowners. It's been, we've, we've, we're fighting that at the moment. Depending on what we get back from this initial letter that we wrote. Decision's gonna come down whether you hire the tax attorney or just doing what they're asking, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't meet the criteria of the IRS as far as making the board members employees, and that's, that's kind of our fight is there's three criteria that it has to meet, and it doesn't meet any of them, so we're just trying to figure out why I P R S would want them to be employees, because they're not, they're not gonna get enough to pay I P R S anyway.
And how would you even figure out the quarter?
Well, that's the biggest thing, if everybody comes, the expense that creates, putting everybody in the system for payroll, it would increase our workers' comp during that. There's a lot of things that go with it, so.
Who owned F M C landfill?
The three counties. The three counties. And, and the cities, I mean, there's twenty-seven members on the board. That, we did watch a video of the new compactor working on the landfills, working really well. We're already noticing that approximately ten percent more compaction than what we're getting with the old one. Everybody's really thrilled with it. We had a exceptionally good month. We brought in four, 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 four thousand one hundred and thirty-six tons of debris, which is about double what we'd normally bring in a month. We had brought in a bunch of possibly contaminated dirt from the Quirk Center building in Osage, but according to the D N R, it was not contaminated so bad that we were able to actually use the dirt to cover. So it actually saved us quite a bit of money, plus we made quite a bit on, on bringing it in, so. That was all we had at the last one.
All right. No other comment. Just a couple FYIs. You guys got that email of the sexual harassment treatment on the twentieth at one thirty? Please attend, or there will be a video afterwards that you can watch too. Discuss future agenda items.
E B S.
The what?
E B S flux.
E B S flux.
Should've you say we're not gonna have to, second meeting, the week of Thanksgiving?
So you have it.
Through all the resolutions and everything, when I was talking to, to the Howard County. Through all the resolutions and everything, when I was talking to, to the Howard County auditor, she said, she said, though, we're certifying it. It's basically you guys are giving permission to.
Certify that.
Yeah, because you guys are saying okay to the six hundred thousand.
Yep. Yep.
So we don't have a, unless J Quon's on.
No.
He may.
Middle of November, I guess, please help us out. You guys want a letter to the department heads on or before December eighth? Or just break it up at the department head meeting? The formal cost of living slash wage increase and or health insurance increase.
Fireball, isn't it? It does hurt to get it out to them now, but then they've got it, so we can discuss it on the eighth.
Okay, we'll put that on the agenda for next Monday then. If I do know what social security gap is for us.
Two point eight.
Two point eight, so.
And then I got the I P R S twenty-fourth, and then certain things. Well, healthcare, we don't have yet.
Future agenda items, I guess, you know, sometime early December, we're gonna have a wage discussion for elected officials.
Didn't have early. I know.
I want to say we do it like the fifth of December.
Our, just up here, ask the department meetings on the eighth, are, do we have a timeframe for budget, like goals, like to have everyone presented and when we want to have some decisions made, and then do we have guidance as to what the budget is? You mean, are we starting with a zero baseline, or you're asking us to stay within two percent somehow, I mean, or what? What do we have guidance on that? Or is it like last year, come on with your wish list, and then, this is what the problem was last year. Some people came in with wish lists, for lack of a better term. Some people came in with bare bones, and then we kind of went back. The bare bone people said, well, I got next year, I'm coming in with a wish list, so if you cut me ten percent, I'm gonna be less more of what I was asking for. You remember that discussion? So I just, somehow we need to be more communicative, I think, this year and open with the department heads and where this is gonna go and what expectations might be, might be sense. I'll leave that to you guys.
Does Dom have the budget worksheets ready to go?
I don't know, I guess the budget worksheet.
The twenty-six, twenty-seven lines?
Yeah. And, uh, I don't have them ready to go.
We're discussing next Monday, see where we're at.
Yeah. Yeah, we almost, I don't know, because it's kind of hard to tell people through their budget with the increase, if we don't have anything on healthcare, that's a big apply, I don't know.
The only positive about this year is there's no new supervisor. So, yeah.
And I should hopefully have insurance numbers probably after the fourth of December.
For our country.
Well, I mean, your action can stay on.
That's the issue.
What your timeline is, I mean.
That was the issue last year. Cause they were pumping it all up and then.
And if that's your goal, then just stay it and start working for it. I mean, if your goal is to say, hey, two percent growth, then just make that a announcement, start working for it, I mean.
It's pretty, I mean, that's what you have to do. If somebody throws a wrench on it, then we gotta come back and redo it.
And we have no idea where revenues are, and so this is just the start of the discussion. I feel we're not in that bigger hurry, because like I said, there's no new board number, and we have the guidelines that we have to have the two public hearings of April thirtieth approval. So.
Yeah, I think I would say save your way a lot of time if you say two percent. Cause if we go higher than that and we get cut back, it's just a whole lot of waste of time.
Yep.
Like, there are still hurt feelings from last year when the whole process went underway and then we cut. We, oh, it was cut. There's still hurt feelings for that, so just, not only is that a good way to do it, just, you know. Be cognizant of that and try and be communicated with us and help us, help you, I guess, is the big thing. And there was a lot of unknowns, and there will be probably well into February, March, I think.
And it is these third year of the three-year contracts with the four percent. So there's half of the staff already know what they got through unit contracts, so that's always there too. I just think it's a little bit early yet, but we got twenty-fourth, so we can discuss the letter on the first two. If you want it out before the eighth. We do have the district two meeting on the fourth, you might hear some more stuff from the state lawmakers. Elected officials, Dave, I mean, since we don't have a compensation board anymore, we can discuss that, whatever.
Yeah, you can. And I don't think the official decisions made, the resolution is passed, same time as budgets, I mean, plug something in, obviously.
Correct.
There is some pushback statewide that I've been hearing about the homework aspect of it, I guess, for lack of a better term, the research. And I think there's been a couple of counties that have actually didn't do a compensation board last year, and then reverted and now are building a compensation board this year. From what I understand, because they're getting pushed back from A, elected officials and B, members of the public, that they didn't do a sufficient enough job last year of doing those research and doing that comparison thing, so. But that falls in your court. You know, I just would remind you that that requirement is yours if you don't have a compensation board. So if in fact someone is upset with that number or feels like that number is inaccurate, we just need to make sure that you guys have justification for those numbers. Break up with them what comparisons you did and what research you did to get to that number. You just didn't pull zero, one, two, seven, whatever number out of the sky, that you have some sort of way to justify the number that you came up with. So just be cognizant of that, I think this is year two of that now. So I think we're gonna see some more pushback to make sure that those numbers are being calculated as opposed to just selected.
All right. Anything else, Sheila, for future agenda items?
Nothing, I can take that right now.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? So. Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Isaac. Motion by Scott, I think I had to adjourn at ten nineteen, on the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and if he goes, motion is carried.